Looking at, can you get by with four? Do you think you need seven? You know, and then we're gonna look at the product itself.
I mean-
And come up with justification as to why they think they need-
I'll go back to what I said on the furniture. I don't see anything here that bothers me. I'm okay with all the furniture.
I know, I'm with-
I'm okay with all the furniture on here. I recognize, you know, guys need places to sleep. I recognize that, you know, in, um, in things like the day room, you probably want some things that are comfortable for them because they are gonna be spending time in there. We decided to go to the 24-hour shifts. It just, I don't see anything here that bothers me on this. I mean, there's huge price differentiations, obviously, but that's a different issue.
That's, that's the shiny object. What I'm here to tell you is what they currently have is what we're currently asking for. There's a lot of things that we have that we have went through surplus in Walmart and we continually buy it. We are here presenting what we need, not what we want, not a wish list or anything else. This is, we've met with each vendor, we've laid each room out. Jennifer modified the tab to show you an appreciable comparison of the two.
And, and this is all, just so I'm clear, because like I said, I don't see anything in here that bothers me. I just wanna make sure I'm clear on one point.
Right.
This is all additional stuff we need.
To meet the current demand-
No, 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 I understand. But I mean, like, if you've got a desk already, that desk is coming down. You're not throwing the desks, you're not throwing all the existing furniture out into a pile-
We are gonna-
And putting nothing, going nothing but new. You're moving what you can move, and then this is the infill for what you can't move.
That's what I'm saying. Please keep in mind, we're moving to a larger facility. We're gonna move what we can that will make the move and will survive and everything else. And then everything else is gonna be infilled.
That was my question.
Yeah. We're, we're making every attempt to repurpose what we have now.
I gotta disagree with Mark. I mean, I look at this furniture prices and I wouldn't spend this money at my house.
I said the prices aren't, I said what the list of the furniture is doesn't bother me.
Right.
I don't disagree with the, the price issue's a different issue. The list of the furniture, I don't disagree with. I mean, you need a bed.
Sure.
You need a dresser. I don't know if a dresser costs-
Yeah.
I haven't bought a dresser in a few years. I can't tell you what that costs.
Is there anything particularly jumping out at you, like chairs or just everything? I mean,
I mean, if I was spending my money, I mean, I would buy a bed. And I would buy a hell-for-stout bed because if it's a bunk room, the bed should be the one thing that gets used the most. So, a good bed and mattress. I mean, a nightstand and a dresser, I mean, I don't, you know, you're gonna sit stuff on it, but at a, at a hundred and eighty bucks per nightstand, I mean, I don't know. I mean, and I sure wouldn't pay seven hundred and some odd dollars for a chair, but, I mean, that's just me. I mean, I'd, I'd go buy one at a garage sale, but- And I, and I don't have to sit in it every day, and, and you're right, but I, I do sit in the, in my truck a lot most of the day, and, and I wouldn't pay seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for one of those either. I'd go to a junkyard and buy a new one, but-
I, I think we can do this very easy. We do not argue the substance of what's there. We're arguing the price of it. I am not gonna argue the price of it either, because I pay taxes like everybody else. I think if we go with what we have, and if you guys wanna talk to the vendors or why this costs less or what, but if you agree with the substance of what is in each room and the way it is laid out, we proceed from there. And why is this chair cheaper than that chair? I, I can't answer that. That, that is a vendor-specific answer that they need to render to you guys.
I mean, really, the prices are high, but if there's warranty on some of this stuff-
Right.
That's five or ten-year warranties that, you know, it, it is heavy-duty stuff. I mean, I can understand that, but I, I mean, I wanna warranty that they're gonna come replace it, no questions asked, and, you know. And even the chairs, too, because I mean, I, granted, the chairs are gonna get used, so.
If you agree with the substance of the room layouts, okay, take the price off there. I think the most appropriate way is if you agree with the way the rooms are laid out, the substance, the, everything else, we'll let the vendors explain their prices.
Yep, good with that.
Chris, is that, is that answer, okay. Mark?
I'm good with that.
Jeff?
Rocker recliner, and I'm still stuck on that.
That's for the day room, and, and, and like I say, all we're doing is gonna use that to meet the current demand. We're, we're not gonna play soccer with them around here.
Dining room, you're saying you have eighteen dining chairs right now?
We don't have that now, but we can have up to twenty people there now, and we don't have them-
Play mean commissioner. Right now, long ago, you said that we are replacing or we're pricing what we have now and gonna be moving over. And if we don't have eighteen chairs now, why do we need eighteen chairs tomorrow?
On the, on the layout, the big table that you guys are planning on bringing over is like-
Ten.
Yeah, and then there's two smaller tables that they each put in there, so chairs for around those.
I can buy eighteen folding chairs for less than what each of these chairs is gonna cost.
But you're, they're not holding four hundred pound people.
They shouldn't be. I'll tell you what, you got a four hundred pound EMS person, we got problems.
For some of those guys that are tall, they got, oh.
Four hundred pounds?
Let me say this, Jeff.
I'm not gonna get in trouble, but I don't-
They're, they're not gonna pass, they're not gonna pass their, uh, fitness test thing.
Let me, let me just answer this, Jeff.
More than I weigh, okay?
We, we currently, where we're at now, okay, we're not able to meet the demand of the number of people. With where we're moving into, that will give us space to meet the need and demand of current people. I don't know if I've got eighteen chairs now or twenty-five. All I know is when we repurpose what we have and infill with the new, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to salvage eighteen chairs. I'm gonna have to plan on for worst-case scenario.
All right. Can, can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion here? Jeff, why don't you, outside of here, sit down and talk to Mike about what the needs for individual pieces of furniture are? Because I don't have a desire to engage in this discussion about how many dining room chairs is the appropriate number of dining room chairs.
I don't know that you do, Chris.
But I don't wanna take away from your ability to get involved in it. It, it just seems like that's something you guys can sit down and talk about. Go out there and look at what they got and figure out. I mean, you're good at this stuff. I'm not.
I'm not necessarily that good at it.
But, I mean, we can-
We had enough here. We got it all being-
He's a good window patcher, I'll tell you that right now.
Well, but that's, but all we're doing is, I mean, I don't know if eighteen's the right number. Maybe it's seventeen. Maybe it's nineteen. I don't know that answer.
Why we got one bid for eighteen and one bid for sixteen? What's, Schrefer's bid sixteen chairs and Samco bid eighteen? I thought they would have the same number.
I mean, you try to do the same meeting between two different vendors, and it's a proposal, so this is what they're-
We've already, we've already answered that question, Mark. That, that's why we're presenting you this right here. We've already had them come out. We've already spec'd the number of chairs. No offense to Jeff. If Jeff wants to come out and redo that, you know.
I, I don't wanna get down in the weeds like we're gonna end up in, but-
We're already there, Mark. We're already there.
I know, and that's why I'm saying we shouldn't be there. But, Mike, when you say you've already done it, is it sixteen chairs or eighteen chairs? Which is the spec?
It is that chair at that price. It may be twenty or it may be eighteen.
Okay.
It's that chair at that price.
So, my point was this. I don't see that the numbers of pieces make that big a difference. They don't look unreasonable to me. The prices, I agree with Chris, seem fairly high. That's probably, in all honesty, because the only two bidders we got were office supply companies. And when I look at their office stuff, it seems like what I normally expect to see for office stuff, when I look at their living furniture, for lack of a better term, it looks very expensive to me. I mean, I would not go, in a million years, to Samco to buy a bed. I might go to J.C. Mattress Factory and buy a bed, but on the other hand, I wouldn't go to J.C. Mattress Factory to buy an office chair.
But the two vendors that we were supposed to go look at, were these two because they were on some cooperative purchasing?
GSA.
But my point being, I, whatever the number, whatever the number is, is the number, my concern has a lot more to do with the price. And, you know, I don't know that there's a problem with going to, J.C. Mattress Factory.
It's like going to a convenience store and paying extra because you gotta, it's convenience store is exactly what it is. It's for convenience.
Then that shoots us into the bid side of it.
That is fine. We can buy chairs.
Chairs, tables, tables, chairs, recliners.
Cooperative purchasing, so their proposal's based on cooperative purchasing.
Oh, okay. Once they have everybody else.
Is it possible that Samco went to J.C. Mattress and said, "I need this"? No. Okay.
No, they went off a GSA scale that, that scales everything out, or cooperative.
I mean, we can go to J.C. Mattress and, we can do that. It's whatever you want to do.
Hell, yeah. I'm sorry, that's, that is my exact point, is I would never pay that much for it. Now, the heavy-duty chair, I understand that. If you can justify paying, uh, where'd them chairs go? I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep two hundred and fifty dollars for a dining chair. I mean, is it wipe-your-chin for you, put a bib on, or what? It's a dining chair. It doesn't need to be two hundred and fifty bucks a pop.
Listen, guys, like I go back to before, if you agree with the substance, ignore the price, and, and we'll let each vendor, okay, if we gotta go back to J.C. Mattress, take the prices off. If you agree with the substance of the, the chairs and everything else, it may be eighteen or it may be twenty, but here's a chair, here's J.C. Mattress. I mean-
Hey, Mark, will you take a, a layout of the building?
We, we've already got that. We, we have-
And put where each one goes? You have that?
I already have. Samco submitted that.
Will you email that to me?
Yes.
So I can look at it and say, "Well, okay, this is where eighteen chairs are going." This is where each one's going. And that might help me understand a little more.
You know, and I'm sure they can come up with less expensive stuff, but then you're gonna lose the weight rating. I mean, it's just kind of a-
I'm sorry, if y'all were sitting up here in these seats, I bet you'd be looking at it a hell of a lot different.
I'm not crusading for expensive stuff. I'm just trying to realize this.
No offense, Mike, I'd be looking at it different if I was sitting in your seat, too.
I'm not, I'm not gonna argue prices, the substance of it.
Or I may understand it more.
I know.
And so we did the jam?
That don't mean we didn't do it right or wrong. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have got into the weeds with it then either. They had the budget that we're working with. We got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar FNE budget to work with, and we just-
Estimate.
Blasted through a hundred and twenty.
It, it was an estimate.
I know, but we can't go over. We got a pretty good record right now of not going over. I like to keep it that way.
All right.
Well, I don't know what we, send me that layout, please, and we can look it over.
Okay, then we just need some direction? Do we want to go out to bid for all of this stuff, or we wanna cooperatively stay with Shreefers and work further into it, or what's the direction? Because we have lead time on this stuff, too.
Shreefers is-
Totally the least expensive.
Well, but it's not, but it is. But it's not, but it is.
It's the least expensive. There's questions about-
Okay, so, for example, I'm looking at the day room. We go with Shreefers. Mike, if we go with Shreefers-
Yes, Mark, yes.
You get six rocker recliners and five chairs. And that's it, because they didn't bid on anything else.
Right, that, that's not an accurate, yes.
Well, so I'm saying is, we can't pick Shreefers.
You're exactly right.
But we, you know, because the, you, I mean, I look at the numbers and I say, "Okay, it makes sense to me to have five recliners, two lounge chairs, and three end tables, a coffee table, and five chairs."
In, in my-
I don't have any objection with any of that stuff.
In-
But if we go with Shreefers, Debbie, you're, we're going with Shreefers, you're getting six recliners and five chairs, because they didn't bid the other stuff. And if we're going with Shreefers, we have to go, and that doesn't make sense to me, so I'm, because I'm confused.
In my opinion, the layout you're gonna see is, is from the vendor that bid everything. The full price that you see, the, the, uh, you know, the thirty thousand differences because some didn't bid, some, there's one vendor that bid everything accordingly.
Whether or not, because there's one vendor who didn't bid one or two things.
That's what I'm saying. One did, the other didn't.
And these are proposals. We didn't, we didn't spec everything.
No, the one didn't bid a seventy-eight round table or a three-monitor arm mount.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, I mean, no, neither one of them bid everything.
The discussion was, these are the things from the room, and they proposed their recommendations, so it's not like-
And these are both on state contracts.
Yes, they have, yeah. There's a couple items that I'll get to. Basically, look, whenever, earlier this morning, I talked to the EMS folks. "Hey, let's go over this list today, hopefully. Let's find out if we need to get additional pricing from somebody. Let's get that. Let's ask them about, let's ask them, let's fill in these holes, and then come back to you." The purpose of this was to say, "Hey, this is kind of the range we're looking at, and is there anything on here that seems unreasonable? And then we would like to come back with you and hopefully address a lot of these questions you're having."
I think that's an excellent proposal.
I'm good, and, and if you wanna reach out and look at some, somebody else for some of these things that seem unreasonable to us, I'm okay with that as well.
And so those were the recliners? Was there kind of anything-
It seems to me the stuff that looks like it's out of price is what I would call the non-office furniture. Does that make sense at all?
Yes.
I mean, I look at the office furniture stuff, like the EMS field supervisor, the disp, that stuff all looks about right to me. Desk chairs are expensive. I bought them for my law firm. They're expensive. But they help, you buy nice ones and they hold up a little bit better. And you do, and a desk chair gets sat in a lot and gets moved around a lot. Um, but when I look at the bedroom stuff and the day room stuff, the stuff that I don't consider to be office furniture, that's where, to me, the prices seem to suddenly go really high, probably because they don't sell a lot of that stuff. And therefore, and therefore, they probably keep the price pretty high because they don't sell a lot of that stuff.
And that's totally accurate, Mark. I mean, that's non-office equipment.
And, and, you know, as far as bed, I use the bed as an example, or mattress, even easier one, mattress. We could go out to bid on mattresses. We could literally go out to bid.
Probably already have a bid.
We already, yeah, we already have it.
Well, I'm just saying hypothetically, we could go out to bid, and we would have the mattresses before you would be ready to use them. Because they're a pull-and-play, they're right on, they're on the shelf.
Right, yeah, right, right.
And if you go to office, if you go, if you go to home supply store, or, not furniture stores, sorry, if you go to furniture stores, you can probably get dressers right off the shelf. You know.
But there's a quality factor on all of those.
Yeah, but you're not getting any, I, I will tell you this right now, with all due respect to Samco and Shreefers, you're not getting any better quality on the bedroom stuff than you are from a furniture, from a furniture store. You, you're getting a different quality on what they do well, which is office stuff. And we know that. You bought furniture for your house, Mike, right? You bought a couch, you probably bought a couch before.
It's been a while.
I'm guessing you didn't go to Samco to get a couch.
No, I, I, I went there, yeah, no.
But on the other hand, if you, if you needed a desk chair at your house,
I hear you.
Samco's probably the place you would go look.
Right.
So, that would be my two cents. I'm tired. It's already twelve fifteen.
We, we've got appliances yet. We've got one more.
Oh, yeah, that's, that one's starting to-
And then my question to you before you leave that-
I'm good on appliances.
I'm good on appliances.
Some of this is six month, or six-week lead time? So can we talk about this again soon?
Sure, when are you gonna talk about it?
Next Tuesday.
He's gone.
I know, that's why I kinda did the-
Put on next Tuesday.
Send it, yeah, send it to me and I'll, I'll-
However you go, we're gonna be all week.
Yeah, I told him I was going for that, too.
I didn't let know we could get out there. Tuesday at fifteen?
I'm good with all the appliances. Uh, I'm good with the televisions, because they're replacing the other televisions that were already in existence. I don't have any problem with any of this stuff.
What ice maker? Why, what's a hundred and thirty-pound ice maker?
Ice maker is great.
So we're just doing these, these televisions that are listed on here? Thirty-two-
I don't know. I have no idea.
We're doing six thirty-two-inch televisions and one sixty-inch television, as I recall.
Replacing existing-
It's just replacing the old crap, and the big ones for the day room. Isn't that right? It wasn't a six-in-one?
I think it was seven.
It was seven total, so six-in-one.
Wasn't? I can't remember. I have no idea.
It was whatever the recommendation was, after you clarified that it was just replacing what we already had on my machine.
All I gotta say is, I'll tell you what I told Donnell, don't come back.
Hey, after today, I don't think Mike's gonna wanna come up here for long.
I'm not gonna be here next Tuesday either, as far as, so.
What about the, why are we, what's the refrigerator got that's so special? It's almost two grand.
No, that's for two of them.
That's time, that's divide by two, Jeffrey.
Oh, awesome.
So-
That's for two refrigerators.
Yeah. They're nice, but they're nothing crazy.
Hey, you can make me small.
We got a closed session, yeah?
Okay. I just saw that was the very first, I was like, oh.
Okay, can we go? Because we got one more item and I wanna get done before you go.
Double oven.
You guys got what you need?
Well, as far as the date of the-
Come back, not next week, because we got something next week. Come back the week after that on the furniture issue. Only appliances, you're good to go. Radio, you're good to go. What else do you need?
Where's the double oven going? Why you adding a double oven?
Okay, next item on the agenda. Captain's prerogative here. Uh, discussion of building maintenance personnel. Greg?
Yes. I'm afraid I may say something about an employee or something, so can we do it closed? Or if not, it's fine.
Well, I need to know, I mean, as I understood it, we had two, it's kind of a bifurcated discussion. One part is, is we're having a hard time keeping positions, right?
Correct.
And since we're having a hard time keeping positions, that's not a personnel issue. That's a budgetary issue. We have to do that in an open session.
Okay.
If you have an issue with an individual employee-
No, I do not. I'm just afraid if I say somebody's name and mention a figure, then, uh, it's fine.
Salaries are public information, for the record.
All right.
Anybody can find out what anybody's salaries are, because it's public record.
Well, me and Greg talked about this. Obviously, he's having trouble filling two positions. He's went through a couple of them that stayed for a couple weeks and have left. It's kinda hard. We can talk about the starting hourly wage. So we kinda looked at that, basically. We looked at the state of Missouri, what their maintenance worker won, two. We looked at the city of Jeff, what their maintenance worker paid. And custodian versus maids, okay? This, I've got a synopsis of that compared to what our employees are making now, and if we would increase the base rate up. And also, at the same time, I said, "Okay, Greg, maybe we just look at a cleaning service, so we can compare this. What it's gonna cost us annually to increase everybody's salary, or what it would cost to go out and get an actual custodial cleaning service." The building that was affected right now is basically the health department. And so we went to this individual, not assuming that we'll have to bid this anyway, but he did give us a quote on what he thought it would cost, and what he, how much time he thought it would take. So depending on what you guys wanna do, if you wanna look at increasing the-
What's the number?
He's saying the health department-
Almost nineteen thousand.
A year?
A year.
Fifteen, fifteen-five a month. And that they would dedicate five nights a week, six hours. Two men, three hours.
Fifteen fifty a month?
Fifteen fifty. So it's eighteen-five.
Six hours a night?
Six. But two people mean three hours.
I understand that, but, what?
That seems excessive to me, given that Darryl used to clean it in the mornings.
Four hours.
Four hours.
Yeah, he was in there quite four, but, yeah.
So-
I do think you can get incredibly cheaper than this. I mean, obviously, this guy has overhead. He, he is buying the material, and he's got a profit built in, and so-
Is, is he supplying all the tissue and stuff like that in that price?
Just the cleaning.
What would be tissue, because that's resupply?
Just the cleaning material. I mean, he's gonna have a copy of it. So we would have to bid this. I just didn't know what direction you were thinking, if you were thinking-
Did you email this to us, or you just got this today?
I think I attached this to the agenda.
No, you didn't.
Oh, she didn't? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. He brought it in actually late yesterday afternoon.
Toilet paper, tissue, and so-
Thank you.
These supplies can be purchased through them or we supply them. I think garbage bags, too.
So what, what, give me the, on, on the salary issue, why, why can't we keep you? How much more is the state? Where did, where are people leaving to go to state?
I've got, uh, one left went to work for the county, down in Miller. The other one went to work for the city in Fulton.
So they weren't residents, I mean, they weren't from around here? They were, are they working closer to their homes?
They have moved closer, well-
Well, I mean, like, if the guy lives in Eldon-
Yeah.
And he's commuting into Jeff City for whatever our pay is, and he can get the exact same job at the exact same pay in Eldon, it's a heck of a lot better deal for him not to have to drive.
And traditionally, since I've been here, it's been older people that have retired from another job, so they're willing to take less money to have another retirement.
And I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing younger people. Like, yesterday, I said, tried to set up two interviews for today, and both of them, after I told them what the starting pay was, because I didn't wanna waste my time or their time, they said, "Forget it." And that's been going on weekly now, calling up, out of the limited app, the limited number of applications I have been getting. I may only get twelve to fourteen, and out of that, I may get two to interview. That's about it.
And currently, the hourly rate is nine dollars and eighty-five cents. The maintenance worker one at the state level, which they don't hire at that level anymore, they go to maintenance worker twos.
They're hiring twos, yeah.
Okay.
The maintenance worker one is twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour. So substantially, I did a spreadsheet of if we hired new employees in at that twelve twenty-nine-
Six thousand dollars.
And we increased the current workers because of that level, it would cost us annually about twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars a year. To bring our starting pay for those two open positions up to basically the, the twelve thou, or twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents, and our other employees up because of that. So I just wanted to lay those options, whether you wanna do that, or you wanna come somewhere in between that amount, and what the maintenance worker one for the state is paying. Instead of the twelve twenty-nine, maybe we can start at ten fifty, maybe we can start at eleven.
Are we talking maintenance workers or custodian? Because it's two different levels of workers. If you got somebody that can fix stuff and essentially save us money.
Jeff, that's what I'm trying to hire, is maintenance ones to come-
That's what I'm asking for, the difference. If we got somebody that's just gotta show up and you're a warm body pusher and a broom. Yeah, it's one thing, but if you got somebody, you're saying, "Hey, I need you to go do this," and they need to have some kind of functioning brain.
You have a job description?
I have both job descriptions for the maintenance-
Our, our job description.
No, I didn't try. But we are considered all maintenance workers here.
So we're all maintenance workers?
So you're not hiring somebody to push a broom. You're hiring somebody who can push a broom, but also maybe do some light construction.
Plumbing, whatever we need.
I'd rather, if we can get the, you know, the maintenance guy to, and keep somebody that can run the facility, because you can run people through here every day for mopping floors and stuff.
Well, and the thought was then, if they see something wrong, they can fix it. Other, if you just hire custodial staff, they're just gonna clean and move on. They're not gonna address issues that happen and see it while they're there.
But if you have them here, they know that they can move up the ladder at some point, rather than, "Hey, uh, after maintenance one, there's maintenance one," or Greg's job.
But even the custodial, uh, from the state of Missouri, the custodial one and two, you're going anywhere from twenty thousand, which basically is where we are, to twenty-five thousand, which is the maintenance worker one that I was suggesting. So, yeah, would I like all of our jobs here at the county to compare to the state? Yes. Can we? No.
I would say I'm not gonna put a whole lot of water in that panel there.
So I think we'd go somewhere in between.
The state is about worse than anybody on spending money.
Well, she's also got the one I printed off from the city, too.
My concern is trying to get some people here and keep staff here to maintain the level.
And I've already heard through the grapevine that I may be losing another one. So this is, it's getting to the point where it's getting bad.
Well, Greg, quit making them mad.
Police make, oh, good, police maintenance worker. Couldn't get a more expensive position than that.
I'll try. If that's what their human resources said was compatible with us, what our job description is, with us mowing grass, doing the janitorial work, HVAC stuff, and stuff like that.
How much would it cost us to contract out the grass cutting? Because that takes up a lot of your time in the summer.
One day, one day we-
Yeah, I didn't think that much.
Oh, really?
For all the buildings?
For all the buildings.
I think you gotta just get some people from CNS and try them out. That way, I'd quit wasting your time interviewing people, because you're not gonna find anybody that's, even at twelve dollars an hour, you're not gonna find somebody that's gonna take any initiative, I mean.
I like that idea, because then we don't have the insurance.
I mean, you, you know.
I'm not sure, how can we, I mean, you're paying big money for CNS.
Well, you're paying a fee over and above, but you're not paying the insurance and stuff. It's a little-
That's for labor. That's for labor.
What do you think this is? It's the same as a-
Well, yeah, but, so we're paying them, what, fifteen or sixteen?
Labor's gonna do less here than what they were doing over there at Shepherd's Building. For a maintenance, or for a custodial?
I mean, he's gotta find somebody to, to help out now.
For a temporary basis, probably. I'd have to talk to Jill about how that would work, because, I mean, we're directing their work. We're, I mean, we've been using them for a while. We can continue. And you know what it costs to buy them out now, if we find a person that we like.
Same as we're gonna buy them, if we're using them.
Well, but if you, if you hire somebody now and, and they, they aren't worth a hoot, then we gotta fire them.
There's no good answer.
I mean, until you try somebody out, there's, there's just no good solution, and so-
Why can't we hire the same rate we had for hiring over there with moved files?
When we advertised, we put the salary in.
No, we didn't.
No, I said to put it in all the time, because that'd take care of a lot of your people applying. They'll look at it and go, "Hey, good for nine dollars."
How many of these people that, the two people that you were gonna interview that decided not to, they currently employed?
Uh, one is and one was not.
Make sure you report the one that was not to unemployment, and let them know that they declined an interview because nine dollars and eighty cents an hour was not sufficient.
Exactly right, that's what they're gonna-
Anytime you get somebody who turn, who decl- Anytime you get somebody who turn, who declines to even interview, or if you make an offer, declines an offer and they're on unemployment, make sure you report that to them, cause that'll kick, get them kicked off unemployment.
Okay, I didn't know that.
I am not willing, as a taxpayer, to subsidize somebody who's sucking an unemployment check and going, oh, man, ten dollars an hour, I don't wanna work for that, I can get a free check. So, yeah, report those.
I wish I'd known that earlier.
I mean, you can report them now, never hurts, that's a different issue.
To me, I mean, I think we explore the idea of CNS or some other business services and we just say, hey, we're looking for full-time people and, you know, we're, we, we need some help and, and then maybe we buy it out at some point.
I would say, as a very short-term solution for the health department only, go ahead and hire our radle for a month while we work at getting somebody hired and all that, or doing CNS, but at least we keep that building getting clean and it doesn't add an extra burden to your few people that you have now.
Yeah, I mean, like.
It's, and it won't get into the forty-five hundred or any of that, because it's a one-time, short-term. And then we come back in thirty days and we reevaluate it and we could do it again, one more time.
Or may, or maybe we look at doing cleaning.
Yeah.
We do cleaning for all buildings and let, and.
And maintenance, just do maintenance.
Allow you two guys to do maintenance.
In which case, what we do is we probably bump the salaries of your guys as just maintenance workers, but we eliminate a couple of the positions, which makes it a wash.
And that's where I wanted to know, if you wanted to start out, see how that works?
So do this on the short term, so we get, we can keep the building clean, that helps, that helps everybody, that helps everybody. And then, let's look at two options. Let's look at two options, cleanings, or three options, I guess, cleaning service for all cleaning, cleaning. No, and then reduction in the number of maintenance workers with the commensurate salary increase, being that they're no longer cleaning, they're only gonna be doing actual maintenance work. That would be one option. The other option is, I guess, figuring out what it's gonna take to pay maintenance workers to keep them and maintain them. And the third option is to look at RFPing a temporary service. But that's gonna require an RFP. Kinda like the guard service does after RFP it, cause it'll be too much over a period of time to. Same for a cleaning service, we'll have to go out and bid for the cleaning service if we choose to.
We're gonna have to get to the specifics, you know, exactly which buildings, exactly how much, you know, what floor and all of that too, so.
I'd say it's more of which buildings we can't probably hire somebody at, which might be Pranger or in the jail.
Maybe.
Maybe, depending on what their background is like and whatnot.
So it gives you guys enough guidance?
I'd put it on the agenda in another three weeks then too, so we make sure.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, give us two weeks to, so we can just look at, see how it's going, see what's going on.
Good, good.
Good.
So, right now, you're still trying to fill two positions.
I've got one going today, supposed to be going today to do the physical and the drug test, which I've already sent one to the drug test, he failed, and then sent one to the physical and he failed it.
Well, yeah, what are you gonna get for nine dollars and eighty cents?
And that's why we gotta look at this as a global solution, short term, there's, short term, all we can do is fill gaps, long term, we have to figure out a solution.
This one works, this one works.
Yeah, it comes over.
Okay. And seeing that the clock is now twelve thirty and we've spent three and a half hours in this commission meeting, I think that's close to a new continuous record, isn't it?
That's not a close session.
It's gonna be a close session, I don't know what we wanna do. We don't have to do it today.
Have you seen this, Debbie, were you on that?
I don't remember if she was on that.
She's not on that. This doesn't go to us, I mean, the hierarchy is it goes to her, she's in charge HR. She needs to do the investigation on it, the discussion on it, and then come to us. Yes, that's what HR does. I entertain motion to stay in recess.
So moved.
Second.